Father God, we thank you and we give your name praise, honor, and glory. Father, we ask that you will order our steps on today concerning the county, God, concerning your citizens, and we pray for those that have authority over us, God, and we ask that you send your angels, God, to be with us in Jesus' name. We pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let it lead to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
This is a regular meeting of the Hendrick County Board of County Commissioners being held on Tuesday, April 24, 2018, at 5:00 PM in the County Commission Chambers in La Belle, Florida. In attendance are Chairman Mitchell Wills, Vice Chair Emma Byrd, Commissioner Darrell Harris, Commissioner Michael Swindle, Commissioner Carson Turner, County Administrator Charles Chapman, County Attorney Mark Lapp, Deputy Clerk Anita Bichaud.
Thank you, ma'am. If you are here tonight and you're going to be wishing to speak, if you would, grab a form in the back, please, fill it out, and bring it up to the clerk, and we'll make sure we get to you there. First thing on the agenda tonight is the bids, reconstruct threshold lights and runway and pavement modifications.
I move to adopt option one.
Motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under bids also, we have miscellaneous advertising services.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have the bid for that. We had only one response, and I recommend that we proceed with close to news as our paper.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Once again, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under consent, we're going to be pulling C3 and D1.
Motion to approve the balance, Mr. Chair.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries to C3.
Mr. Chairman, I can address that. In addition to the approval of the lease, there's the resolution, which the state statute requires that you adopt. I sent you that to you via email on Friday, so just to be clear, your motion would be to approve the lease and the resolution.
Motion to approve the tax resolution as presented.
And the lease.
And the lease.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair.
D1.
I make a motion to approve, I assume it's the $55,000,414 times three? That's going to be covered in our 166?
166. It was 83, now it's 166. They actually doubled.
Outstanding. I'm glad y'all asked for that and got it. There're going to be 10 at each?
Yes.
I hope that they never, ever, ever have to use those.
Yeah.
So, that's wonderful that we're getting them.
Yes.
Awesome.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's going to take us two wards and appearances. Tonight, we have Carmen, Ms. Carmen Torres Ortiz with us. This is proclamation for May 2018 is Older Americans Month. I like that. I'm an older American, I guess.
Yes, I'm representing the area agency on agent of Southwest Florida. We provide services for the elders. We provide resources, like provide information and provide assistance with benefits to stay at home through different programs like the state and federal funding programs.
All right.
Awesome.
Are there any questions on that?
None whatsoever.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got a motion to adopt from Commissioner Harris and a second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We read this in, read this into the minutes.
About your discretion, sir.
It's effective without reading it, but if you want to read it, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We also have a proclamation for National Public Works Week.
Shane write this?
I can speak to it, so.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the proclamation for National Public Work and National EMS Week.
I second it.
Got a motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Byrd. Any further discussion?
Well, just a point of clarification, Mr. Parker and staff, as a commissioner, to show, if I could, if you coordinated and let us know the dates, I would like to be there if possible, number one, and number two, help, you know, to show our appreciation to staff, if I can help barbecue or whatever my time and schedule permit, if you would communicate that with us.
For the record, Shane Parker, Henry County Public Works Writer. Yes, I will let all the commissioners know, we, in the write-up, we said that we were going to have a barbecue. We have funding available in Roden Bridge. We usually have one every year.
I'm going to do Pioneer again?
Probably Pioneer again.
Okay, well, I'd just like to, you know, be there to help the guys, you know, let them know how much we appreciate them, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, it's not just, it's not just guys.
Well, people, folks, everyone.
You know what I mean? Come on, bud. 2018, man.
It was transgender.
All right, back to the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one's going to be a public hearing. For Hendrick County Board of County Commissioners, represented by Ms. Emblets.
Good evening, commissioners. This is the adoption of the capital improvement schedule. This is something that's done annually. We're a little behind on this one, but.
We bit.
Pardon me?
We bit.
Yeah. And anyway, we would ask that the board adopt what has been presented to you, adopt the ordinance.
I move to adopt option one.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Harris and a second by Commissioner Turner. This being a public hearing, is there any one of the public would like to address this? Seeing none, is there any further discussion on the board?
Yes, so just real quick, Ms. Emblets, Charles, could y'all give us a general snapshot in our email inboxes of what? You remember, we had a list of projects that we wanted to conquer in this fiscal, one of them being the parking lot, I believe. Isn't that right?
There's an internal facilities capital improvement list.
And this, I know this is the bigger, yes, sir.
We can get with Ms. Davis and the Facilities Department to update you about the capital improvement list that you're referencing.
And then, and then we have this one to reference on the outside.
Right.
Right?
Yes, sir. We can do both.
Perfect. Thank you all.
Okay.
That's all, that's all my request was going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emblets.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next one is amendment to the Hendrick County Code of Ordinance.
Oh, yeah.
Come on back.
I was too busy giving Shane the stink eye, I'm sorry.
They don't like each other, I love it.
Yes, but the staff is requesting a continuance of the amendment to the Hendrick County Code of Ordinance regarding the noise control definitions, and we're requesting that it be continued to May 22.
So, move.
Second.
Yes. Okay. I'll wait.
Just to be clear, for the record, May 22, 5:00 PM in La Belle.
Yes.
All right.
Motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Harris. This is also a public hearing. Is there any one of the public would like to address this? Seeing none, further discussion from the board, Mr. Ford?
Just a real quick question, and I'm sorry, I went by your office today, but I think you're going to lunch, I'm not sure.
I don't go to lunch, sir.
Well, you were hiding from me then.
I was.
I couldn't find you.
Under the table.
Is just, is timing an issue? Is, or are you getting pushed back, or?
At this point, no. This, this is, I'm sorry, did you?
I can speak to that. So, I know when we were talking about the noise ordinance prior, that there was the potential of a business looking at relocating from Miami. That business is still interested.
Uh-oh.
However, they, they really do need to provide us some more due diligence as far as what is their noise profiles and a little bit more information. In terms of this being an economic driver to hurry up and get the ordinance done, that's, that's still in play, but we need to coordinate this a little bit better based on scientific reasoning and what design standards are put in play for this.
But we're not asking for them to give us that, to design our ordinances. I mean, we need to go by our standards and what we want, and they can fit or not, right?
This has an interface with the airport land use as well as the noise ordinance. They're all intermarried, so there's just some more information that we need to be able to bring you back a solid product.
All right, so it's not, it's not turned into a big ugly ordeal, it's just a time-consuming, need more time to make this happen.
Right, but, but, you know, as Charles said, it's, we still have some things to work out to be able to make a better recommendation from staff's perspective.
Okay.
And just as a side note, we will be bringing an update to the land development code on the airport section of our code that does speak to noise control and compatibility around the airports, not on the airport. They're two separate situations. I just wanted to give you the heads up that we'll be bringing that to you all in the next couple of meetings.
Is that going to be as a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Do you notify the people around so many?
Around the airports?
Yes.
No, not in this situation. It's just an overall advertisement in the paper.
And is that going to be the May 22 as well?
No, it's the sixth of Thursday.
We'll be bringing it to you on May 8 as the first reading, and the public hearing will be on May 22.
Okay, when you do the public hearing, do you have to notify the people?
Okay, yeah, it is.
No, we don't do that. We just do an advertisement in the newspaper and through our social media of our agenda.
You don't have to.
No, we don't have to, sir.
And just.
Y'all think that's okay.
Just to go along with what Mr. Harris is saying there, if we, if we make sure we have it on the social website as well, that way the people are informed, so.
Yes.
I mean, I understand you don't, you're not required to, I understand that, but as a courtesy, I do believe we need to reach as many avenues as we can to make sure they know what's going on.
Mr. Chair, for clarification for the board, this is not something that is a land use or a comp plan amendment recommendation that was made in a vacuum. There were many, many public surets that were done out in the community that had the involvement of the residents that surround the airport as well as into Flagel and 7K Estates, so these, this particular recommendation, both option A and option B, that will be brought before you, has had significant public input.
So, do I know about the noise?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, if we could clarify, we're, we're actually talking about two different things, and one of them is the land development code for the airports sections. The other one is the airport area, Airglades Airport Area Land Use Study will also be presented to you on May 8 as well. So, we will have a, two big agenda items that we'll, we'll be presenting to you, related, somewhat related, but not dependent on each other. I don't mean to confuse things, I hope you understood.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, we had a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any questions or comments under the FYI?
No, sir.
Mr. Parker's there, he's itching to get up, so we're good. Ms. Emblets, she just sat back down, we could get her back up here one more time. Okay, we'll move to staff report. Mr. Chapman?
Mr. Chair, is this, is this request just a one-time increase for the, for that? Or for a time certain? Y'all want to make it that way forever?
It's at the discretion of the board, however, the intent of the staff report at the time of writing was for this to be an amendment permanently within the ordinance.
Let me ask you this, how many times in the last five years have you know off the hip? That's the reason why, too, I wanted to update on the capital improvement schedule right there, but how many times in the, in the past five years would you say, or how many years you've been with us for?
It's coming up on five years, sir.
Have you, have you had to exercise the 20? And then, do you think, I mean?
Outside of a hurricane, probably not.
Outside of a hurricane, no such thing as a blue sky emergency situation, but say it was an air conditioner repair and we out to close to the 20, 24,999, there is an error in here, it's actually 24,999 is my current level.
That's ridiculous.
Not 50,000.
Ridiculous, you guys didn't have that right.
I would say I've only exercised that privilege in five years, maybe three times, and it's very extenuating circumstances. Post hurricane Irma has been.
Y'all want to give this guy 40,000? I'm telling you, you gotta watch him.
Okay.
Just to, just to throw something in there, I mean, the situation is, if the chiller goes down, that's not an air conditioner, that's a chiller. $20,000 is going to get him here, but he's probably not going to fix it.
Yeah, it's going to be a 50, $60,000 fix.
He's got to have something, we got to have room for him if it's emergency.
Chair, it sounds like you're all for it. I make a motion to approve.
And just to be clear, this is an ordinance amendment, or what we require an ordinance amendment.
So, we got to do a public hearing.
So, at this point, you're really just authorizing us to proceed with the public hearing, and that will be brought back to you.
Yes, sir.
We can change our mind.
Damn. Or we can fire him if he messes up.
There you go.
Either way.
Why you gotta draw the F-word? He's not going to mess up.
We need a, we need a motion on this now to?
I did.
Yeah, to give direction to proceed with the public hearing.
We got a motion, Mr. Turner, second by Commissioner Swindle. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're to the Health Department?
Do you want me to? The next item was a placeholder, there was nothing in your packet. We sent something out via email. This is a temporary Health Department space with the Royals companies. This is for the Health Department repair from Hurricane Irma. It's going to be, we hope, six months or less before they get moved back into their building. Dr. Pepe's here if you have any questions, but they are displaced all over the county right now, and some of the people that have been so, you know, welcoming to them need some of their space back. So, this is to put their, all their employees in one space, and we have got it approved by the insurance company, will be reimbursed 100%.
This is Royal building?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no cost to the county.
Well, it's an upfront.
We'll have to upfront it, but we'll be reimbursed, yes, sir.
I make a motion to.
I'll second it.
Can I add that y'all, y'all put a six-month window on that for it to be brought back before us regardless?
It don't really matter.
No, 100% it does, because in the blink of an eye, it'll be a year.
Needs to be back in their building.
The lease is six months, though, isn't it?
If it's a six-months lease, it's got to come back before us. I don't want to open into this what I'm driving at.
Yeah, if you make it for a year.
It's a one-year lease, I'm pretty sure.
We don't want to lock them down for a year, no, we don't want to be paying leases for a year.
Well, I mean, it's got a 45-day opt-out.
Right. Our intention.
The term is for 12 months with a 45-day notice, and then we're, we can get out.
It's a little over $60,000 total, it would look like.
Anybody want to take some action? I'll bet you lunch at the courthouse that we extend six months. We're past six months. Take the action if you feel confident, we'll get out in 45 days.
He's saying no.
Dr. Pepe's saying, don't take the action, because he knows he's going to lose the bet, he's going to have to buy me lunch.
He said no.
How much time do you think it's going to take?
I don't know.
There's now opening bids.
Does everybody hear what I'm saying?
You have to have the.
Blink your eyes, and a year goes by.
Is that correct? They haven't been in yet. If they come in to do the studies on the building to see what actually they have to do.
The bids or the, well, Shane.
What I understood.
Contractor needs to hear, there's a six-month timeframe associated with them not having a house. The, the director of the Health Department, that guy that we all love back there, needs to hear. You got six months to squeeze the fire out of your contractors to make this happen, or you don't got no home no more. You can go hang out in the parking lot of the Health Department that's being worked on, you can get you some cool tents, can do whatever you need to do, but you ain't going to be hanging out in the Royals building at X, no matter who's paying for it. And then, when we press the issue.
The biggest, the biggest determining factor there is going to be what kind of remediation they have to do. Once they go in and actually adjust and look at the building, right now, I don't think we know.
We don't know every, all the repairs that need to be made. We have the stuff that Jennifer provided from the insurance, but we did an informal procurement where we're selecting a contractor. Then, from there, once we select a contractor, the board will have to enter into a contract with said contractor, and then the contractor will put the bids out. We're going to have to go room to room, because some of the things mentioned in the insurance doesn't line up with what's in the building, so we need to make sure we get everything ironed out about what we have to fix, and if it's not mentioned, we got to get insurance approval to repair it, or you guys are just going to have to repair it anyways if they don't pay for it.
Actually, what Commissioner Turner's coming with is, we're giving them an open door to take forever.
Can I, does anybody want a history lesson of a company called Hammer Construction? Because I'll go to Norm all day long. He has a beautiful Rolex, the county probably bought 18 of them for him.
We don't hear about it.
I didn't think so. Okay, I'm good. I'm going to hush.
Shane, how long do you think it would take for them to come in and do the inspection?
I don't have, I don't, I don't know. I mean, when we get the informal procurement, which would be May 2, we could bring it to the board for you to pick, to authorize a contract with said contractor, and then we'll have to do, and we'll have to walk through with the contractor, Alan, Eric will, I'll beat him myself, and look with Pepe to find out, hey, these items are the ones that are damaged compared to the insurance report. Then, they'll have to issue bids, advertisement, just like we did for the courthouse, and they'll get them in, and they'll prepare a guaranteed maximum price, and then you'll know how much you're looking at, and they'll tell you, of this amount, this is how much insurance is going to cover, and this is how much you should recover that you should pay for.
All we're going to cover is what the insurance covers.
Well, I think there's some other items that.
Wonderful.
And, you know, once again, it's going, once they come in to do this testing on the building, it usually took us two months to get a turnaround on exactly where the situations were. I mean, if there's water infiltration into the building, they're going, the contractor's not going to know that. Until they bring in someone to do the analysis, they won't know that. That's where your time is going to be determined.
Well, I'm not betting.
Well, they.
Me neither, but I'm going to be buying lunch.
Jennifer's already authorized for an inspector to come out and check some of the walls, but we actually have some areas where there's the VC tiles on the floors coming up.
Because of water infiltration?
Water, but it's not on the list, but it's coming up.
Exactly, and now the insurance company's going to get into a, some bodily fluid match over, was that caused by the storm? Is it under our policy? Is it in subtext J in Mandarin Chinese that we had to actually cover that or not? Even though we have magic coverage from PRM that covers everything. A meteor could strike us.
So, what the insurance, what they don't cover, then the insurance should pick it up.
What, who's they?
They, this is going through FEMA.
FEMA will cover the difference, that's the idea.
On a reimbursement basis.
On a reimbursement basis.
So, that would be 100% should.
So, we have a 2% deductible, and we'll be applying for the 2% deductible from FEMA.
So, what, what, what I would recommend, Mr. Chair, is that we put the six-month window on it. We hope that the Royals company would lock into that. If you think that we need to go with a year, I'm going to tell you, it's going to be all over a year. But I think that we need to impress upon the insurance company and said contractors, because it sounds like you're talking about the construction management role, correct, Shane? Not necessarily a contractor that's walking through. And then, we need to, we need to express to everyone that this is an expedited process and that the tab's running, because it's just like if you, your car got totaled and they're giving you a rental car, they're telling you, just go get a rental car, and they're going to pay for it for the next four weeks, but the reality is, when six weeks goes around, you guys are in a tussle over those last two weeks, who's actually paying for that? But we're talking about X number of dollars for the Royal Company's buildings, and everybody getting comfortable and just saying, hey, you know what? We're, we're good here, this is really not that bad, and no offense to anybody that, that is on the county or the state's dollar, but it's not their, it's not their dollars. And then, we, that's where we've got to be mindful of that fiscal tag that's associated to everything.
Let's add it on to the end of the motion, six months.
So, the lease would be a six-month term with the 45-day opt-out still in, and, you know?
Tack that on the end of the motion.
Did you make it?
Yeah.
Did I second it?
No, I seconded it, yeah.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Is there any further discussion on this?
The only thing I would say is, Commissioner Wills, I think that it's imperative that, that we stress to our insurance company, and Shane, you squeeze them that, you know, we, we got to turn this thing around, that Dr. Pepe needs to have his facility back up and running. And, you know, there's, there's ways of telling them that, that we want them to, to engage this process, that they should be responsive to that. Davis, do you dislike any of that? What's your concern? You have some concern, you're just not wanting to say it because you're nice.
I'm just concerned if it is over six months. I mean, our intention, and we want it to be six months of us.
I think it will be. Yes, ma'am.
But if it's over six months, then that's.
You'll have to just come back.
Okay.
Nothing you can do.
We can do that.
They'll support a day window that you.
Yeah.
Still get with that better?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you all.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We'll do with that better.
Helms Road extension, Lord, Jesus.
I move to option one.
Second.
All right. Do we know when we're going to be done with this? Do we know when we're gonna be done with this? I get beat up on it every day.
They want, they want them in red, yellow, green mode?
They want them going through there now. I'm just talking about the road. This is phase, we're talking about the red lights now, but do we have any idea when it's actually gonna be a open project?
August, September.
September?
We were supposed to start paving, but we had some issues with the rock and we would not let the contractor pave on it. So, during.
Shouldn't say it on.
Is that technically legal, what Commissioner Harris did?
I didn't hear what he said.
He rode through Helms Road.
He rode with me. We were doing an engineering inspection.
This is, this is.
And you're both turning red.
Illegal.
We're allowed to, per Florida statute.
No, you're not.
Okay, that's the only question I have. Just got a motion.
Near-year award.
Second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Mr. Lapp?
Yes, we're back in front of you on 719 Carolina Avenue. You talked about this last meeting. After the meeting, the Suns said they'd like to do the deal that you authorized in November. So what I'm asking for you to do is authorize the deal from November with a couple of conditions on it, that they pay the taxes, that they get the insurance, that they sign the documents, and if they don't do that timely, that we, I can just file the lawsuit and don't have to come back to you. I move option one.
What's timely, I mean?
Well, you can put it, I, I left it vague. I mean, if you want to put some limits on that.
It's not a Mark Lapp term, guys. Somebody put that on him. Mark Lapp would never do that.
No, it wasn't. I, I don't know. If you want to put a timeframe, maybe 30, 30, 60 days?
You like 30? You want 60?
Let's say 60, just because I, I have, I'd like to see it sooner.
Yes, sir.
But I, they, they seem to be challenged, I'm referring to the Suns, they seem to be challenged in pulling this off, so I'd hate to have it fall apart just because they didn't get it done in 30.
I'll move that motion recommendation.
60 days starting today.
Do we have a second?
Okay. Second.
Motion back to Mr. Swindle, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion?
What do you, what do you think the, the cost of litigation would cost, Mark? Just off the hip?
You know, there's a lot of process costs in addition to the fees. I'd say 6,000 to 8,000.
You can't do that?
I've not done that kind of case before. I'd rather have Mr. Watkins, who's done those before, do the first one of those and then, because it was, it's.
Not that one anyway.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
I owe you one.
See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Move for option one.
I'll second it.
And how come we have to keep doing this, Mark?
Yeah, me and Commissioner Harris, we get wore out with this.
It's, it's the vegetation and the waterways and FEMA reimbursement for that. I don't know if anybody who's on staff can speak about that, but I, we're waiting on some developments for that to be completed.
Okay.
Commissioner Harris, motion made by Commissioner Harris, second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Is there anyone in the public who would like to address the board at this time?
Aye.
Come over, you're smiling, does that mean no or, yes, sir? Come on, Dr. Pepe.
There you go. Uh-oh.
I'll be quick. I just wanted to thank you all for your support. I, I could tell you the folks back here to present it to you for the lease did a lot of work behind the scenes. I know there's been a lot of work also with the building itself, and just want you all to know publicly how grateful we are for all of your help. The county has just been amazing. Charles, Jennifer, everyone has just been absolutely amazing in supporting us. So I just want you all to know that, that, that we're, we're gonna do whatever we need to do to serve the community, but you all have been amazing. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Dr. Pepe, it's taken as long as.
No, it's, it's good. I recognize it's a big project and, and it's more important that we keep the county whole financially as well. And so you all have been great, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. This is my district's, Mr. Swindle.
I have none.
Just wanna direct the board on, I gave some Florida statutes for the golf carts and to give directions to, that they will go ahead on and do ordinance for, for Harlem. And then I do understand that the last meeting, they talked about doing it for the county. Trying to piggyback off the city, I do see some things that need to be tweeted, but I will get with Mark, and I just need the board to direct him to move forward with it. Right now, they're, they'll be able to ride it at a certain time, but once that period is over with, I need to make sure it's in place. They riding it anyway, so let's put something with it, you know, put some type of direction with to piggyback off the city. So if they was to go in the city, they won't have two sets of rules.
Mr. Bird, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, that's.
I second that motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Bird, a second by Mr. Turner on the golf carts here. Any further discussion?
Is that for just a certain area?
Just for Harlem for now, because every area is different, and I don't want to override and say Montour or Pioneer, because the law states that.
Take care of your problem.
Right, the state said they have to be up on a certain speed limit, and so there's some tweeting that need to be done.
They have ATV issues everywhere, not just golf carts.
But it's gonna be, it's only for golf carts.
It's all important, Bill.
Any further discussion? See you none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Do you have anything else, Ms. Bird?
No more than brown sugars coming up. We pray and everyone be safe and enjoy theirselves. Looking forward to everybody coming out.
Commissioner Harris?
Mr. Parker. State Route 29, they are gonna have sidewalks.
Yes, sir, sidewalks on both sides.
Okay, and then at the, when I was at the TPO meeting, they, you know, it was, they said they could extend if you wanted to ask for something else. And Cowboy Way from Alice Street down to 80, where they can get to Walmart, that's, we need a sidewalk there.
Okay.
Just on that one side, we don't have to.
It's on the side of the road.
Because you can get down Cowboy Way to Martin Luther, and then it goes to Alice, and then if it go all the way, they can all get to Walmart on sidewalks and everything.
Okay.
And then the next one, I think maybe a Jennifer crest. On FEMA, that we, we don't have any idea when we'll get any answers on FEMA, do we?
Are they cleaning slack?
Yeah, you know, like on the FEMA, like, because we got rainy season coming, you know, we've all talked about it. So anyway, we got rainy season, all the creeks have trees and limbs on them, and I think Shane don't have a crew that can do that stuff unless it's emergency. I've got eight creeks across the bridge, and, and so was waiting on FEMA, hoping to get the funding from FEMA.
Hey, we'll be here tomorrow, we'll ask them a question.
And I think you're already doing one emergency.
We are, we're cleaned out the Roy Brown, removed the tree, fixed the yards, did the swale. We're in discussions with South Florida and DEP about Polywall Creek, just north of 78, and we're cleaning out the box culverts on Austin Relief Canal down 78 and across under North River Road.
Are you going all the way through Roy Brown?
No, not all the way down Roy Brown right now, because we can still clean that during the rainy season. We had to fix where the tree was across, the sediment in front of the structure, and fixed a washout in the ladies' yard, and put the burn back up on Brittany Oaks. And my office is working on the RFQ so that we can go ahead and hire a contractor. We're gonna have to clean them anyways, we'll use the MSBU funds to clean some of the tributaries. That's the game plan, at least.
Is that, is it gonna be bad news if we have the rain this year like we had last year, in all those creeks? Okay, thank you. One more thing, Henry Glades Unmet Need Coalition. Okay, anybody that has a problem and is not taken care of, this group right here through the United Way will meet their need if they qualify, which, you know, like I had a guy in 78, his backyard is full of trees. They're all on the ground, he, he's not able to get out of the house and clean them up. So a phone call from these people, they'll clean it up.
They only, it's only for recovery.
Right.
I, I attend the meetings, and it's only for recovery, and they are running to some loopholes. They had to finance, but they don't have the workers, so there is some. Because they just established themselves, so they haven't got everything together, but they are there, and they are.
They, they mentioned some of the churches are still involved in it and, and want to help out. So there's flyers at the back, if anybody needs one, and the phone numbers on here. So there might be people in there that can help. If you hadn't got it done by now, it's bad. I yelled at cars sometimes.
Mr. Harris, on the Unmet Needs Coalition, like, skirting around the bottom of the trailer, is that, is that one, or a ramp being built, or are those potentials?
Okay, I, I think the ramp, I had a call about a ramp too.
Uh-huh.
I think that is possible.
I have, I have, I don't know how we go about getting that question out there, but we have a fair amount of, of older families and/or families that have a loved one that needs a ramp, and.
But they have to be damaged during the hurricane, it's only recovery.
Ms. Bird, Ms. Bird, what I'm talking about is just if, if there is a person out there that is, that is hearing this, and, and we need to know of it, and then I think that skirting is a code violation, is it not?
Yes, sir.
Skirting is a code violation?
But they gotta have the money to, most of them don't have insurance, so they gotta have the money to skirt it, and they don't have the money.
What I'm driving at is, is that I know a handful of people that would be very receptive to engaging that process, but there's no, there's no mechanism to know who is the person that needs that? Where are they? And, and how, how much in need are they? So I don't know if code enforcement can help with that process, I don't know if y'all get that deep down in the weeds, but you know, I look at, I look at, for example, Mr. Ortega on 1581 Sassy Road, you know, he doesn't have two nickels to rub together, he has no support family relief to speak of. I go out there, my man has a spoon, a spoon, you know, and was trying to fix his sewer, his sub-ting issues, you know? Now that's, that, you know, that's a hard case if I've ever heard one. Well, you know, I think that if, if we knew about some of those hardships, we could help with some things. We, being the, the people that I work with, if the United Way has a different pot of money, or there's another entity out there that can hear that, then, then I think that those are things, you know?
Mr. Chair, if I might, so in the past two weeks, because of Mr. Ortega's situation and, and a couple of others, and we are in the process of training new code enforcement staff, what I've asked them to start doing is to not, not only be the hammer through the situation and getting people to be compliant, but also to start making special note of situations where it is truly a hardship. Now, we do know there's gonna be those actors that are gonna get called out about their skirting, and they're just saying, well, I ain't got no money, I'm not gonna be able to do it, blah, blah, blah. In reality, they've got a brand-new Ford F-150 out front, so you've gotta.
Absolutely.
You gotta have some common sense with this, it's not gonna be available to everybody. But in those situations where social services does need to be contacted because it is a hardship case, that I want them to start highlighting that out and bringing that to my attention so that I can help route that conversation onto the proper placement.
There's a guy called me, he has no legs, wheelchair, but tree fell on his ramp, and we do have an organization that, around LaBelle area, that will go out and do that. And Robbie Hull, just called Robbie Hull, and he went out and fixed it.
He, he does, he does a lot for ramps, different stuff like that as well that you're talking about.
Like small stuff like that?
Yeah.
He had to do it.
Well, I, I'd love to know what that, that list is looking like, if y'all have anything that's, you know, in a database, or y'all started to comprise that.
Develop, as soon as I get something of, of merit, I'll send that along.
And I did have a language with Charles and them to try to put something in place, but to, you know, to do something about it, because everybody know if you take it before the judge, he's not going to, he's not gonna, you know, put them in a position where they pay for, because they can't afford it. So it used to be, it used to be a time that the churches got together and did this, but we just need to make something happen, because there are hardship people out there that we, I think that we need to step up and help. Is that simple?
Yes, ma'am. I think, I think this, this kind of plays right into, I sat in a meeting this morning with a group of business leaders around the county, civic-minded people, and, and just having a conversation about trying to develop a mentoring program. And I don't know if you all know of any mentoring programs that are here locally. If you do, I would love to have a response back from you all about what you're doing currently. I think that that's a vacuum that we're, we're missing greatly, and it is something that we need to, we need to think about queuing up. I'm not talking about county resources or energy being poured into that from a great perspective, but I am going to challenge our county administrator that if a program does either rear its ugly head and/or get developed, that we would be receptive in A, participating, and B, allowing our county administrator and the different departments to identify a couple of different people in, in each group that would, that would put sweat equity and hours into that. With that being said, a couple of other things, obviously, I'm looking forward to the June 12th joint meeting between us and Glades County about the Training Center. Commissioner Swindle, any developments in the interim?
Since our last meeting, I've not heard a word.
Okay, okay. Well, I hope that you'll continue to engage that a little bit, I know you got a lot of energy on that, on that level.
Did the county manager leave?
The county manager is leaving. He has hired on now as a consultant for Glades County, and, and they're, they're looking to hire an interim while they're in the process of, of finding someone else.
He was at that meeting, like, like he's gonna be there the rest of his life?
I'm telling you, you gotta watch him, Commissioner Harris. Charles Chapman's probably looking for a job as we speak, because of Commissioner Swindle's comments, so.
More than late.
He's definitely looking now. Go ahead before. We can live in the same place. I'm very angry. Can you tell? I want tractor signs on 80 and 27. What was, Mr. Anderson, what do we gotta do, Shane? What do we gotta do? Why don't they, why don't they want to touch the 80, 27 corridor? And I know it's not gonna fix anybody, because my next question is, is, is in the same exact route, and I've already chastised the people that have asked me for this publicly, but go ahead.
It has to do with DOT not putting unnecessary signage on the roadway, too much signage on the roadway.
Have they seen how many tractors drive down 80, 27?
I'm just telling you how they do it, but they're, John.
How many people have to run into a cabbage truck before they want to say, hey, agricultural area, you might want to heed that? Can we put that in the form of an electronic mail and CC me on it? Because there was a death not very long ago, not to make light of it.
No, I know what you're talking about, but they, John Anderson doesn't make the.
I know he does, I'm not mad at Mr. Anderson. Thank the world to Mr. Anderson.
They've got a.
But I ain't trying to call out the District One Secretary. I'm just asking for four to six signs to be put up. I'm not asking for, on 75, them to actually change and say Closton and LaBelle that way. I just want a sign with a guy on a tractor, sitting on the tractor, that's yellow with a black tractor.
Don't you, Charles knows somebody can do that.
We can't on our roads, we can't do it on state roads.
We've done it on our, we're, we're working through that process with Mr. Anderson, and so we're, I hear you loud and clear, we'll, we'll turn up the heat.
Tell them, we'll, we'll pay for the signs.
I'll tell them, but that's not a problem, there's still the approval.
We'll turn up.
I need to go see my man in LaDica, that's what I'm gonna do.
We'll turn up the heat, sir.
I bet you he'll, I bet you he'll, he'll, he'll work, because he, he loves y'all. He loves y'all.
Who are you talking about?
I ain't telling you his name publicly, because you're gonna be mean. But hold on, with that being said, Shane, with that being said, now we got a road, and the Pioneer community is begging me to put up, I don't know what we'll agree to, but something that says, people ride horses on Hendry Isles. I don't know how we, I don't know if we say equestrian environment, equestrian community, yield, you know?
Oh, some, don't we got something in Davie, like a.
They do, Davie has awesome signs.
With the share the road bloat or something, I mean.
Oh, you, excuse me, Ms. Davis?
Well, there are some.
Oh, so I see, once again, Commissioner Turner gets nothing that he requests.
It's first time.
That's what it is. I see how it is, man. I see how it is.
We got the horse signs in Montura, no problem.
Horse signs in Montura. Making sure that I'm.
There's actually a couple tractor signs out there, kid.
See what I mean? I'm coming to the party, whenever y'all have the joint appreciation for public works.
So you're wanting them on Hendry Isles Boulevard?
Yes, sir, I think that would be awesome, and maybe Tampa.
Maybe one or six?
No, I think, I don't know.
Two.
Surprise me, Shane.
All right.
One would be phenomenal.
Which section are you looking for, like at the entrance? Are you looking on the further end south of Arcadia?
I will say, I've seen, I'm not joking, but I've seen a Pacifico going to the, to the Gator Bay and to the, to chill, but I think right there on the curve, you know, across from Mr. Cesar's place?
Yeah.
And then definitely on that straightaway, the straightaway where they really seem to pick up speed past the firehouse.
Okay.
That's where everybody wants to get after it, it's a drag strip.
All right, well, I'll take a look at the signs in Montura, and I'll look at the ones in Davie.
Okay.
Blue race.
They get after it.
For the raceway there.
Ms., Ms. Noemi Sanchez, 1950 Vero Avenue, has, has claimed that her road is out and that we're coming in the rainy season, she's expressed a tremendous amount of stress associated with that.
1959 Vero?
1950 Vero, is that possible?
She must be off on the, I thought, we paved Vero, she must be off the paved section.
Not private, right?
No, I don't think so, but I've been to it, Sanchez, Ms. Sanchez, she's been beyond patient, she's just, she's just expressing to me that she has concerns about the ability and/or inability to get in and out, and worried about family. We've had two or three different instances like that. If we could just look at that and maybe, maybe check it out. And then from a standpoint of just the, 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 the community had, in Pioneer, the community has a tremendous amount of concern that they've expressed over the portion that was purchased by Eagle Farms, and I didn't know what the status of that was, if there's been any update of sorts, but just, just wondering if y'all are having a dialogue with Mr. Aguilar about what his plans are, and if, and if that's gonna be, basically at the end of the day, that's gonna be an eyesore, or if we're going to basically, you know, hope to come to an agreement with him that at the end of the day, whatever does happen out there, it's gonna look better than, than the illegal activities that have been occurring out there for years?
We spoke into his agent, Rock Abajadi, with Rock Enterprises. They submitted a rezone request, to zone it so they can remove the material. They said they spoke at a homeowners' meeting, I was at one, and basically they were just answering, he was in the audience, Mr. Aguilar, answering questions, but weren't given, wasn't given a presentation.
Yeah.
They showed up again, you were at a meeting, but.
Yes, sir.
Staff told them, no, you have to have a meeting with staff present, that way it can be advertised that, hey, we're talking about the Eagle Farm removal of spoil material from the, what we call the 42-foot canal, so everybody that has an interest, interest in it can be present, and they can understand what's actually occurring and what staff's agreeing to or not liking about the project, or answer any misnomers. Seems to be that there's a question about how can they remove the material when there's an easement, or what's happened to the canal, are they gonna flood out? And we can be there to answer those questions.
So we're scheduled.
Am I, am I, am I correct in assuming that there will be nothing subsurface? It will be coming all off of the top? There will be, at the end of the day, potentially a level planning field that they walk away from, and/or whatever happens after that, you know, that, that's to be determined, but he's not going subsurface and he's not going over the edge?
He's not going subsurface, he's not widening the canal, he's not deepening the He's not going subsurface, he's not widening the canal, he's not deepening the canal, he's just removing the, the overburden from the excavation of the 42 foot, removing pepper bushes, cabbage trees and getting in there, removing the spoil. I do know they wanna do rock crushing, staff has concerns about that, but they're, they've got, I wanna say five phases they propose to remove it.
Yes, sir.
They will be posting a performance guarantee for impacts. There will be some drainage pipes they're proposing for crossover drains, but essentially they're just working down the canal bank on the west side, maybe the east side, but mainly the west.
And, excuse me, and we've asked to be present at the next Pioneer meeting so that we can have the formal presentation where the applicant and staff are there, like we do for other projects in Pioneer. So right now we're scheduled for, I believe it's the 14th, May 14th?
I think it is.
So.
What's the status of Bill Caesar's property? Is it Bill?
Yes, it is Bill, William. We have not received his, his performance bond and so that's where it sits. So he can't do any work until we get that.
Okay.
So that's the last, last piece.
Last question, Mr. Chair, is when are we, when are we gonna take another discussion on code enforcement? I don't know if it's a new 25, you know, 555 or a foreclosure discussion or what it is gonna be our next chat about that, but when is that occurring? I apologize for not remembering.
It's in the process, we're looking at mid to late summer to get the next round going. We've internally started to identify different projects and start monitoring it with the adjustment and reporting, because there's, there's a little bit of confusion between code cases opened and code cases closed and the result to having what I'll call is an acceptable property, use the term beautified property if you like, but that's being very liberal with that term.
Uh huh.
Is finding ways that we measure success with that particular property and that particular address, so that we're not, we're not necessarily.
Not taking a blight.
We're not fudging the numbers by saying we've got these many code cases open, these many code cases closed, look at our batting average. It's actually what is the result visually from the street with that property? And so we're, we're, we're having a strategy session internally to find out, how can we get to that definition of success, understanding we do have poverty issues that we need to handle with like Mr. Ortega, but there's others of connecting people and connecting them with programs that we already have where they could qualify for some assistance or just motivating them a little bit better to, maybe they need to reconsider their paint color on their house, um, those type of things.
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Chair, that we have, we have such glaring problems that, you know, I, I want to make sure that code enforcement and staff here for me that, um, there's a fine line between being empathetic and being forgiving to a point that you allow disarray to become the flavor de jour. And, and I think that we've, we've gone so many years or so many generations with not being consistent on our code enforcement and unfortunately, I mean, this precedes all of us, that, you know, it was, it was that concept of, well, we have a thousand cases open, we closed 950, you know, if we had X number of more code enforcement officers. Meanwhile, back at the ranch, we really haven't moved the needle that much. So I'm happy to hear you all say that you're trying to find a way to, to identify, you know, is a property red going to yellow and becoming green? And what does that really look like? And is it truly closed or is it just a box that's been checked? There's a major difference in that.
And, and asking the question of ourselves is, is this property code compliant, which is what code enforcement's supposed to be doing, however, it's still ugly and it's still what we would consider a blight. So there's, there's a portion of this where we're defining this is code compliant, but yet it's still an ugly property. How can we then close that gap to get them to improve that property beyond just code compliance into something that is an acceptable standard for that neighborhood?
And I would say that for me, success would be just code enforcement coming to us with a report that says, I, we have identified an actual, instead of 193 properties that have the potential to go into foreclosure, we've identified 100 or 350 that we say these are our red flag properties. Regardless if they have a code enforcement case or they're a poor performer to the nth degree, these are our poor performers. And, and how are we going to engage them to change? Because if you start dialing into code enforcement and you start looking at the correlation between criminal activity and performance on all the different metrics, there's corollaries and, and, you know, we, we have to start paying attention to those facts.
We got, we got some of these condemned, sir.
Yes, sir, there's many that need to be condemned and then there's also the, the conversation about the tolerance of this board about looking for paint color standards countywide. There's landscaping standards.
Instead of having white and purple and yellow.
But, but, but I, I go back to, that is so, that is, that is like trying to get on third base and I just wanna get a batter in the box, you know what I mean? I wanna establish what the lineup is, who's gonna be batting first or second, you know? And I think that we're, we're not there.
Well, we are, we're already trying to find what is, what does that look like for Hendry County? Because there's, there's gotta be some sort of level of acceptability and, and this elected body has got to deal with the consequences of that ordinance once it goes into place.
Cause we're already dealing with it.
We're dealing with it on one side where it's a very liberal code and if we look to further restrict it, now you're getting into dictating to people what color their house could be. And that's, that's a, that's a policy decision that you have to make, one way or the other.
Whatever we did, we need to try to get on with the cities too.
Well, and that was, that was gonna be my, the final thought that I closed out with is, I don't know what the city of LaBelle's acceptance potential is, but I think that the moment that we, the moment that we identify we're gonna deal with neighborhood one, two and three, or X, Y and Z, then, then we then turn right back and look at where that rotates up to the city line and how does that roll up right next to them? Because if we're gonna try to fix, for example, and I use that word, but I'm sure it's gonna offend some people, but if we're gonna try to fix some of the issues associated with Twin Lakes Trailer Park or Sherwood and think that by not having the city of Close to deal with fairgrounds or the, the RV park behind Sunrise Restaurant, we're fooling ourselves. We're doing nothing to change the overall aspect of that conversation.
Everybody should be on the same page.
And we're not.
But they should.
We can't even identify what book we're looking at, let alone to say we're on the same page. So, you know, I mean, and if you don't believe me, Debbie McNeil and Margaret Inbridge, who I have the utmost respect for, wanted us to embrace a policy that said, we're gonna go into your rental home and make sure that you're, you're, you have a GFI next to your sink. And we, we, we can't even agree that we think we have 31 properties or, or 110 that are, that are, you know, out of compliance outside, but we were gonna go inside. And you hear the county administrator saying, we're worrying about the color of the house. I just wanna get to step one first. I think we're much closer to getting to step one, but I wanna, I wanna try to get there.
One A.
Yeah.
Once you get to the color of the house, you're probably gonna have a battle. If they wanna live in an HOA, they'll move in one. People live out where I live, if you want my house changed, paint it. I mean, that's ridiculous. You live in HOAs and they tell you, you gotta, you gotta have curtains, you can't have blinds, you gotta have blinds, you can't have curtains. I mean, what are we doing? This is democracy. We're, this, this, the biggest problem with the nation today is too much government. It sounds like to me we're heading that direction.
And that's where, that's where the rub comes, Commissioner Wills, because I think too much government is a, is a, it's the, the burner's hot, I gotta take my hand off of it, but we've had laissez faire for generations, you know?
I agree with that, Wills.
So.
Don't wanna go too far in the wrong direction.
That's exactly right. No, I agree.
And that's why, every discussion will be brought back for the board as far as tools that you can consider and potentially adopt. This Friday is a meeting between the Hendry EDC, my office, the mayors of both cities and their appropriately assigned staff to start talking about how do we close that gap between code enforcement, number one, being code compliant and then looking at going from code compliant to actually beautifying the area or fixing the area, whatever that may be, and then coming up with that priority list of a neighborhood. There's no way we can define success if we scatter plot across, throw popcorn across the entire community or an entire county. But if we could take a street and just knock that street up into an acceptable standard that we can all be proud of, then I think that can define success and that would help us to build momentum to say, we've done something here.
But, but, but Charles, one thing I think that is an excellent point that Commissioner Wills brings up is in the neighborhood that he lives in, or I'll use Flag Hole specific, I would, I would venture to say that if you took 100 people in Flag Hole and you put them into the church out there where Pastor Ezell's at and you, you surveyed them and you said, okay, we're in the tree of trust, take the gloves off, tell us what you think, they're gonna talk about four to six really poor performers that are in the borough of Flag Hole. And, and if, and if, um, uh, Timmy Potts has grass that three to four times a year gets up to 10 inches high and code enforcement cites him, then code enforcement is ignorant because, because he's not a bad performer. But if you go right down the road, take a left and take another right and then go right around to the corner, there, there are, there are two, there are two homesteads that jump out, I mean, just boom, they hit me in the head. And I think they, they've looked that way my entire existence. There's cars stacked on top of cars and every time I'm in, you know, that area, I get hammered on, Commissioner, what have you done about those? Guess what? They've looked like that since way before 2008. But, but I, I would venture to say that if code enforcement, once again, if I looked up there, if they've mowed their grass twice in the last six months, or last year, they're probably in code compliance for that, that grass exceeding higher that's written up and yet the other issues aren't being dealt with. But yet we turn right back around and we give, we give, uh, the, the gentleman who's taking care of every facility associated with Henry County School Boards on, on that side of the county forever, his, I mean, his place looks neat as a pen every time. And the moment, the moment he, he decrees that he wants to change something on his fence or something, we hammer him with, hey, you didn't pull a permit. Now, I'm not saying be inconsistent and that's what it can, that's how you can interpret what I just said, but what I'm saying is, is we have really bad performers that are getting away with really bad activities and then, and then the reaction to that is, let's punish, and that's the word I'm gonna use, everyone for not being perfect to the letter of the law. So, so we gotta find that happy medium. And I think that it's an easy thing when you, when you really break it down at its core, because we're not talking about thousands of properties. I do think we're talking about hundreds throughout the entire county, but I, I think we may be talking about dozens, you know? So, and I would love to know what, what county staff, what county staff thinks, you think it's more, Ms. Inbridge?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I would, I would love to know what that looks like, you know? Because y'all have, y'all have a solid working idea of what it is, you know?
With the new analytics that we have, your, your point being well taken is, we'll drill.